Aging population.
Old people.
So aging population, you think.
We are providing the best service possible. There are still things to with more personnel and.
This has to do with the police budget. Since September first of this year, we had approximately to present about forty-eight calls of service that the sheriff's department came down here and took care of for us. Where that's the highest in the whole county. Are we required to pay the sheriffs for coming down here and covering our police department? So they don't, they haven't been charging us for it? Okay, thanks.
Are we, does anybody get charged for the ambulance calls?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, um, my foreign exchange student passed out at school. It was a fifteen hundred dollar bill. I went to Sweden to collect that money. So even.
So even every call, somebody's getting charged if they come to my house, the insurance or somebody's paying for it.
Everybody gets billed because once we roll, we have gas.
Yes.
We have personnel, there is insurance, there is workman's comp, uh, there are supplies that are used.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, everybody gets billed and so far I.
Um, is an aging population the only trend you're seeing there, or is there other areas where we're seeing increase? Or a certain time of year where we're seeing an increase of health?
Uh, during the summer, there is an increase because there was a great number of people here. Um, we noticed that there were a lot more car crashes this summer than there were previous years. Of what turned up to that, how excited more people, I don't know. Uh, we haven't found an analytical trend to that. Um, if you look at, you know, different factors, changes in drivers, we look at weather conditions. We actually look at, um, certain places where the accident occurs to see if there is something.
Dangerous.
Worldwide or we know that the sun on Jay is a significant, you know, clean intersection. But we seem to have a lot of crashes at Jay and Alpine or Jay, uh, that you. But outside of the sun, I can't tell you.
Yeah.
Why we're doing that, but we have looked at that. Yeah.
I have a question. So you were saying that you collect revenue for the, for the, uh, for your calls from the insurance company? What revenue line is it on the budget?
That's true. On the budget, it's not in the town budget.
Ah, budget.
And I don't have a.
Well, then why is the expense recognized here, but not the revenue?
Because we are one municipality that is part of the district. The district is made up of the town of East Troy, the village of East Troy, and the town of Spring Prairie. We cover a certain percentage of the town of Spring Prairie, not the whole thing. The, uh, budget is determined by property values. It's determined by number of people. It's determined by, um, calls of service. So once that formula is put together, that determines how much each municipality pays. The town of East Troy pays two-thirds of the ETA ESD budget. The village pays, uh, what is it? Two-thirds, roughly a quarter, and then Spring Prairie pays a quarter. We have the biggest area and the property values are greatest.
Thank you.
Last question on the budget?
I got a question. Barb, does Alpine Valley put a big strain on our EMS?
No, Alpine Valley is actually in the town a lot, which it might put a strain on them. However, we are working, our new fire chief, Chief Joe Degaro, has gone to a contract service with Alpine Valley so that we are charging that entity different than what we charge a municipal.
So we do service them via contract?
Um, we service litigation. We service the concert venue. We service the golf course. We service the mus-, there are two different music event venues and a golf course that we serve. The speak hill I do not believe we have secured a contract with. I am not sure how they will, um.
So are we actually generating revenue from that or are we breaking even like the snowblow?
Absolutely. That is the number one goal is to make those calls. Because that is a strain for the town of Lafayette, and the town of Lafayette is shouldering that, the Alpine Valley.
Right.
Speed though, which is tremendous.
I remember we bought an extra ambulance to help cover over there.
Well, that ambulance is a contract. It allows us to provide EMS coverage at like the concerts or the events that are held down there without taking away service to our, our residents in, in all of the other areas.
Thank you.
So the third one is, is doing that. But there are times that we have actually run three ambulances through our municipal area. We also contract with the town of Troy and the town of Lafayette. They are not members of the district, but we contract. Lafayette, who provides fire and EMS. The town of Troy, who provides ambulance.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call the special meeting of the electors to order. Um, this is actually your meeting moderated. We have an agenda, uh, on it, I think it's two thirty-six. First one is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three sanitary district three budget. And the board, John Board, we're the commissioners for that sanitary district, but the residents of San Francisco District Three can also vote, re-vote on this budget. Uh, is anybody here from real estate area that has water, build, GM? Water, clean, water, not doing well. There's nobody here. So this vote will be denied by your, as far as getting the votes approved.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-three sanitary district three's budget as presented.
Real second.
I'll second.
Again, we are second. Discussion, jury done. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five zero. Okay, motion to approve the landfill audit. It's a discussion on that. I think the revenue today is around two thousand two hundred. So we need a, this could cause a, since everybody here, this is me, I have to say, a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three landfill audit.
So I move to. I move to approve the, um.
Right. Was it supposed to be?
Okay, uh, we have a motion to, that's settled, to approve the landfill budget. Further discussion, jury done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, um, motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two tax levy to be paid in twenty twenty-three. Again, uh, the wording is important here. This is the, the electors get their approval of the levy. We already discussed the budget. So again, we're under levy limit, so this number is, you're not a reclaiming up, but you require that law. So we need a motion to approve the levy. We have a word here. Motion to, uh, adopt the twenty twenty-two tax levy to be paid in twenty twenty-four. I'll make that motion. Jury to adopt the twenty twenty-two tax levy to be paid in twenty twenty-three. We have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Jury done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, uh, in number five, uh, per section, now I'm gonna get a little link to it. But this is the one here where the town electors, the only people that are, that go even further. You get a police garage that also has, uh, other uses that come out of the outdoors of it. So I'm gonna give you a little review here to make sure they know the world we're at. Back in, uh, March of twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, the, uh, town paid for a needs assessment of this entire facility, the whole campus. And, uh, they documented that one of the town RIs and operations that we have take here seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet. After they had opened house here, that number got reduced to sixteen thousand square feet. The new town hall. Lexis approved it and then they rescinded it. So the town hall is gone as far as the new town hall. So after sixteen thousand, our existing building that were in here is fifty-five hundred square feet, thousand feet of divinity. Which still cluttered it. So everything has been taken care of. Previously, you heard about the town hall improvements. We gave three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars in improvements that had to be done because it is built. Most of this building, a lot of this building is a hundred, a hundred and twenty years old, okay? So, um, what was done here, and we heard we mentioned a lot of the things already, the bathrooms, make them ADA compliant, and also, uh, quote unquote, say, uh, A and B equipment in the, for the courtroom. New roof on the salt shed. Bathroom remodels, we've heard that. New well, our well was junk. So we have a new well, water socket to protect all of our fixtures in here. Replaced all of the furnaces, air conditioners, and came up with a, uh, commercial site, U-ventifier for the basement. We had a wall coming in in the basement, fix that. Got rid of the dust, got rid of mold. Security system all around the whole campus here, make sure that you have this place, uh, surveillance. Carpet is around here, as you walked in, as well as the offices and that ducting, organized urbanization control room. Poonza, you know, also the A and B offices, outside lighting. All that work was done. None of that, anything with the space. And we heard from more, most people saying, yeah, get something. Well, as cruel as the town ends up always being, we're to that point now where, uh, as in how it grows and work done by the DPW and the police department, we had, in our, in our budget for the town hall campus, two line items that why do it that way? Why not put the money into a building? Because it's not, you know, the best way to do it. Let's do it the right way. So of that, we had, with the town hall improvements, we had thirty-five thousand dollars. You know, for security and safety, that's police equipment in the garage. And then we had a hun-, uh, ninety-five thousand convert cold to warm storage. That's where the police cars are now, that are done, exactly, the DPW, so that's the warm storage. So this project, um, originally, uh, with the information we had at the annual meeting in April, was, uh, preliminary sketches and estimates. We thought we did a good job of it. Hundred eighty-two thousand was the estimate. And by a vote of fifty-seven to seventeen, the electors said proceed. So the first thing we did was hire Kehoe Henry. Most of you people might have heard of them out of Alphorn. Dan Kehoe, we hired him, say, okay, here's what we got. Here's the plans we got generated so far. Put us on the right track to get this thing built. So we paid for, uh, began to do that study, that detailed estimate. And, uh, Dan Kehoe, by the way, fifty-three years of being an architect, so yes, you can classify him as an expert, okay? And he came up with the floor plan. It's in that, in that packet where you have to see. And said, here's the floor plan. Don't have any offices upstairs. Yes, you can do it. Just have storage up there. So the building size, and you'll see his presentation, went from a thirty-six by forty, what, to a thirty-six by fifty. So then he told the office here, I'm growing for it. Okay? So with that, um, again, this was a handout here for the early voting, for the voting Tuesday. It's on our website. I don't know if you've seen that. So are we able to, you know? Everybody familiar, again, you were out there. Um, it's a PowerPoint presentation that says, here's where we're at. Here's why you want to do it, whatever. So, um, again, the original estimate we had was thirty-six by forty, now it's thirty-six by fifty. Okay, uh, we only had one window before, I know we got several, we had two where George done instead of one. We also have full plumbing in there, changed our electric from sixty amp to a hundred amp. Uh, and made sure that all of the, um, all of the walls, all of the drywall, all of the, uh, facilities that have to go in there are included in it. So we spent a good deal fine with Kehoe Henry and, um, he said four hundred to five hundred. And that letter was also in that, in that PowerPoint. So anyway, why did they change?
Thirty-six.
We increased the town DPW and police equipment. There was a change in that. They, uh, equipped the storage, we re-confirmed that. Well, it'd be upstairs there, hopefully a lot of base in here. My building having equipment, storage, tight borders. Uh, as you've seen in the police garage, they're basically climbing over equipment to get, you know, get around in there. And then the need for police administrative office space allows two things within this building. One, get the building this back out of here. That's no good. And then I put the court, Dr. Olson. Her office is in the judge's chambers. You guys think that's a good idea? So those two offices where the police would vacate, the two closets, as you call them, to vacate, there would be those two offices for the people here. That takes care of the needs in here. Getting the police cars out of DPW garage, that takes care of the needs for space for the DPW. And then the police department will have the garage and their offices combined. There will be initial storage upstairs, but there's also the evidence room and. So this project takes care of all of those. And again, when we went through this, you can see, uh, all the equipment in the garage. And matter of fact, I think Joe, you may have been the only one to take a tour. Didn't we have someone take a tour? And, uh, you, you went through all the buildings.
Need you for a second, if they light. Seems like we got snow coming tomorrow. If anybody wants to take a walk out there now. This is what we have to deal with for the next four or five months, all our garages, walking over everything.
So again, current garage is not allowed, you know, to move safely through that garage. That's an issue for us.
Yeah, it's like you're grabbing a.
Yeah.
And again, um, it's all there. And you think, again, this PowerPoint was put together by the board and all the staff that worked here. Everybody had, had a pick at it, had it in for us, you know, fully. Not mine, it was really mostly, uh, the, the, and, you know. Uh, so anyway, um, equipment needs to protect against elements that include a police vehicle, uh, tight borders. And, um, the police department, you know, we have trap squad vehicles in there and then one train more coverage. Uh, again, the question is, well, we see other people store this stuff outside. It's like, yeah, you wanna get a call and go out there and they get a ice storm going on or snowing out on a vehicle and take time to clean the vehicle off and then delay to an emergency. Makes no sense at all. Uh, so that's another reason for it. Um, and again, they're ready to go. They're ready to go and then handle it and get rid of that.
Welcome to taxi electric side equipment that is, uh, each vehicle, that equipment is very temperature sensitive. And that affects the longevity and the effectiveness of each of the, each of the.
And again, the, the PowerPoint and the handout online, wherever you found it, uh, basically shows, you know, the, where the garage is and where the, where the offices are. You know, a locker room and a shower. You don't have a shower around here. The, uh, either DPW or for sure, police get an incident there with, with, uh.
Pepper spray.
Body fluids, blood, whatever, what, then the law should know, you should, show over here and do it there. So anyway, um, I hope everybody had a chance to go through that. And we did put in, you know, in the presentation there, uh, showing where the, where the money come from. None of this is in the budget, it's not in the budget. Uh, the money, a hundred thirty thousand is already in the town hall improvements fund. We're not doing it the way it was gonna be. We're gonna do it better, put into that building. The ARPA fund, we have a hundred thousand there. And then the transfer from the land grant, which is for this, basically for purposes, just like this, for use of the whole town. So, um, that's where we're at. And, um, again, this started, I don't know how many times, Todd had a mention at a meet, he said, how did this thing start up? Well, it started up with a brainstorm with Todd and his guys. And the police guys looking at it and saying, there's a better way to spin this cap, okay? Let's not put the money, you know, in that old building, put it in here and take the police cars out of there. There is one storage. Situation solved there? Situation solved in this building, okay? And, um, again, this, this project, uh, forty years ago, actually more like thirty-three years ago, Jim Serge has said, that's where we should build that building. And it's after we're doing it, I'll shoot it. And it's thirty-two years later also. So with that, um, opens up the discussion. And then, uh, we notice this is a vote, so discussion. Uh, wait a minute. Before we discuss, you're right.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Because this requires a special lecture approval. I'm gonna read the exact language that you have in the agenda here so it can start discussion. I move that pursuant to section sixty point ten sub two F authorized, that the town authorized the town board to increase the amount spent on the previously authorized police garage from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars to meet the needs of the town DPW, police department, and administrative offices. I'll second that motion.
Okay, now we can have discussion, let's go on.
Well. And I apologize because I did not see the pamphlet for the spending. So hearing what you said, Joe, this one, not affect the town lobby. This is actually going to be a hundred percent funded based on the budgets that we have, either from the landfill budget that we have for needs like this, or for money that's already set aside that's included in this, this lobby. So there will not be another increase based on the eight to twelve percent already noted here. And it will be taking care of the town's needs as, as we see fit.
This, this would be a twenty-five year solution, at least. The previous, you know, the new building totally, that'd be a seventy-five year solution. So that one was three point three million, and this one here would be, if you say it's a top end of five hundred, would be about nine hundred dollars or forty-five years, versus three point three for seventy-five.
So to dispute any conversations of this is gonna cost the town a bunch of extra money, we actually have the money set aside in emergency day funds and things needed to facilitate what is required to give us the town's needs that we, you know, are expecting as town payers, uh, taxpayers, uh, to go forward. Yes.
So I think it mentions that like approximately two hundred and seventy thousand would come from the landfill funds, which we approved that budget today and it did not include the two hundred and seventy thousand because we hadn't voted on it. So then we would need to modify the landfill budget once we, um, in order to do like.
Okay, discussion.
I run a large commercial general contracting business in Chicago, and I've been following this issue, uh, you know, for the last year. The need has clearly been demonstrated and obvious from the discussion and, and, and observation. You know, the current environment we're in is, uh, scheduled delays because of supply chain issues and rampant inflation. So what, what we counsel our clients, uh, in times like this, that waiting is not a good strategy.
Yep.
The sooner you start a project like this, the sooner you can mitigate those schedule issues and mitigate the cost increases. So I, uh, I support this project.
So I'm tagging on to that. Um, I've got it at two hundred and seventy-eight dollars a square foot. Is that in line with your experience?
Um, yeah, I would call this, uh, like a, a, a mixed use project. The average residential, uh, project is probably in the low two hundreds, but when you get more, uh, complexity and the different uses, I've seen municipal, you know, firehouses, police stations costing, you know, in excess of, of three hundred, sometimes four hundred dollars a square foot, depending on how much equipment is in there.
Okay. And is, are there any plans to get another number besides Kehoe? That's just, or is that just a? That was who we hired to.
The, our protection service is, is.
Well, the actual project will go through a new RFP process.
Okay.
Uh, I think traditionally it's, um, higher than, as many as, as actual, and we already did that with.
And then what would the start date be, you think, or planned? That's, that's open. It depends upon what happens here. Right. What we got was expert advice from Kehoe Henry and said, this is about what it's gonna cost. This is what it should look like to meet all your needs. And, you know, we'll proceed with plans, spec, whatever, you know, whenever you direct us. So, and the question, you know, what we would do with that, we certainly could put that out to more than just Kehoe Henry. But we've worked with other three, but we wanted to, you know, you're taking your chances there, too.
Uh, you had mentioned that the budget from Kehoe was between four hundred and five hundred. So I commend that's, oh, shoot, for the, the high number because everyone else wants to hear the low number. But does that four or five hundred include any interior renovations required in the town hall? And does it include any renovations required to assist with Todd's DPW? Or is that potentially above and beyond the budget that was proposed?
There's, there's gonna be renovations for what we're doing here, and whatever there would be, Todd would probably do, like moving from office to office.
So we're not doing interior renovations in the other building, knocking that wall down, making that more of a.
That would get Todd, whatever it is.
I'm just trying to mitigate any potential future adds beyond the potential budget that was already here to present it tonight.
Um, when you guys looked at the layout and design of the new police building, um, you mentioned earlier that there's gonna be a locker room in there? Is there gonna be one locker room or two locker rooms?
It's gonna be one locker room and one shower.
Is that gonna be male or female or both?
We both. We had discussion with that, with the architect room, that you can do it, you can do it not.
Well, we don't have any female officers at this point here, but that doesn't mean we're not gonna have another one.
We do.
We do.
Yeah, part timer.
Yeah. And, uh, after discussing that, you know, with the police and the architect, we didn't really see, you know, we're not interested in that, you know? And furthermore, you know, well, this is a twenty-five year plan. We're at six offices. If we ever get to eight, which is not likely in the short term here, that, this. that, this would also cover, cover that, break it still, just for three shifts, you know.
Can I ask you just to clarify for me, um, Keel is the design service for the?
The architect's firm.
But once, and that's all been run through, so now there, what, it can be allowed to, independent rental contractors?
No, no. No, no. All we got, all we got is advice from him so far, if this goes forward, then you'd have to, we'd have to hire a firm to design and we'd have them also manage it. I manage, see bathroom ones, I was the owner's rep, rather than pay, you know, the architect amount of people that now do. This one here, I'm not gonna do, or do not.
But we have to have full specs developed, with what we have today, doesn't specify, you know, the insulation and that's all, all the kinds of things.
Go basement, slide on there.
Cause estimate, cause estimate awards to take, so that we're not spending a ton of money before we get people here.
We, we hired, we hired a principal to give us some drugs, how he got the words in the bar in April? Who did?